One, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's work session for the month of August, the beginning of the 2324 school year. I do apologize for the delay as we needed to finish some business in our executive session. If you would, please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. Since this is the beginning of the school year, we do not have special recognition tonight. However, we do have public participation. Mrs. Abigail Morgan Coggan on the end is going to read the rules for public participation. We have one participant today, Candace Flornoy. The microphone is over here. Mrs. Coggan, if you'll read the instructions.
Public participation is the time that the board has set aside to encourage you, as are members of our community, to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the board to review in executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the board will not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with this request.
Thank you.
Ms. Flornoy.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Candace Flornoy. So, may I speak? Okay. Well, I had a concern. I called Shaquilla Henderson. I think it was the second day of school. Me, well, before I got to drive my daughter to school, I was looking through her phone the night after the first day of school. And she was like, Mama. I said, Cassia, did you have a good day? She was like, yes, I did. I had a great day today at school. But we were scared one time something fell from somebody's desk and we thought it was a gun. I said, a gun at school? She said, yes. I said, well, I was so upset that my child had to go to school and think that a gun would drop out somebody's book bag. So, I got in touch with Shaquilla and I talked to her and I explained my concerns. And by the end of that, the end of the day, it was on the news, Middle Ridge, a child had brought a gun to school. And my concern of it is, I know a lot of other surrounding counties, because I did my investigation, that do have metal detectors. So, my question to y'all, why do New County don't have no metal detector? Because so many kids have been getting killed and shooting due to gun violence. So, we know they can get hooked to the gun. And I do understand, like, every school in New County do have a resource office. But if something happened inside the school, I mean, in the classroom or anywhere, it's only one officer. I just feel like parents can bring a gun there, the students, so many people to gangs. And I just want to know, you know, have it ever been a topic in the class, I mean, here about a metal detector? If it had, what do I need to do? Do we need to get a petition to get metal detectors? Like, where do I go from here?
Thank you. I don't, so a petition is not required. I will say, and I explained to Ms. Flornoy, that prior to the pandemic, that we had discussion about metal detectors a long time ago. And a lot of, at that timeframe, a lot of research was done. And it was brought to attention about the negative connotation that it places upon school buildings and upon kids with the school-to-prison pipeline and as well as making kids feel imprisoned. But I did tell her that we acknowledge that after the pandemic, post-pandemic, kids have changed.
Yes.
And it is not the same. They are, I guess they feel invincible now. And a lot of times, there is no longer a regard to human life. So, I told her that we have active discussions about school safety and we appreciate her feedback. And that's something that the board will discuss, you know, as we move forward with safety concerns. So, we do acknowledge that and appreciate your concerns.
Okay, so I have, this is the first concern. And then the second concern, I do understand, like, you know, due to HIPAA and not telling the names, like, it was on the news about a gun was brought in Middle Ridge and then nothing else. Nobody else said anything about it, like it just went away.
So, all of those things are handled in executive session. And they are handled by law enforcement.
Right.
And any other resource provided, like if it involves a child with defects. And so, for privacy reasons and for legal reasons, we cannot release that information. However, I will say, our superintendent, our interim superintendent and HR, they also do visit schools in those situations and have a discussion with the staff there.
Right.
About the situation. So, that the staff and families as well, as well as the principal, the families of those specific schools, so that they can move forward. And if they have any questions, they can answer the questions they can legally.
Okay, because like I know, I have grandkids that go to that school and the parents don't know anything. My daughter asking, she go to cousin, but we have two grandkids that go to Middle Ridge and their parents not heard anything. And I mean, just to send your child back to a school, having, I mean, I just feel like this is unacceptable again.
Yes, ma'am. The messenger did go out notifying all the parents that, you know, that a weapon had been found on the premises. And I, of course, that morning when it occurred, Dr. Barr, who's over operations, as well as members from his safety staff, as well as the director of student services, all went over to deal with the situation. At the end of the day, I went over and I convened with the faculty to meet with them along with the principal to give them as much information as I could. But as Ms. Henderson, Baker and you have both alluded to, because of privacy laws, there wasn't very much that I could say. But I did give them an overview of, you know, what happened, that at no time was anybody, you know, in danger. And that the weapon was quickly secured by our own staff. And then the investigation was turned over to local law enforcement. And I did open the floor up, you know, for questions and the questions that I was legally able to answer, you know, I did. Typically, we would send like a letter, you know, or something like that. But because the school messenger went out informing parents of the information that we would have put in the, you know, letter and it would not have gone until, you know, probably the next day. Because you have to imagine that there was still an active investigation at that time. And so, there still wasn't very much that I could say. But I want to reiterate to you that we, student safety is extremely important to us. And there, at no time was anybody, you know, in any danger. I have since met with the school safety department with Dr. Barr and some of the things that you've asked us to look into as relates to metal detectors of that nature. We've begun the research, you know, into those things as well as other security enhancements. But it's just that we are just legally barred from talking about certain aspects of it.
And I mean, like I said, I do understand that. But like I just said, like, with the parents there, we have people there too. And then my concern is, I hate for something to happen and then y'all, after it happened, after a child get hurt or either lose their life, and then everybody want to put things in motion. Well, you know, these things, we're just saying that the generation is different. We see it every day on the news. And it knew, it have been a point, New County, they have issue, but now it is. And it's okay, because more than our county do. But we just need to find a good way to, you know, solve these problems. I know a metal detector or any security not going to, not solve every problem, but it'll solve one. And we might have 20, but long we do one. We trying.
Exactly. And I just want to also say, and get as close to what I can say, that we are talking about, you know, the kids, but adults also need to be responsible. Because I will say this, the child didn't even know that he had the weapon on him. And I'll just leave it at that. So, you know, we just have to be mindful as adults, you know, to check our children's, you know, belongings, check our own belongings as adults, because it wasn't as egregious as it has been portrayed. But he didn't even know that the weapon was on his person at all. And that's about as close as I can get without saying anything. But he didn't even know. And so, that to me, that's an adult issue.
It is.
Because he didn't know, so somebody had to do that. So, we all, your advice is good advice. I just want to expand it that adults need to be responsible as well.
And let me, let me also add, because Ms. Flornoy, you said you had grandchildren over there. And this is to any parent that may be watching as well or grandparent. So, what happens when a situation happens at a specific school is that we inform the contacts of the child of that specific school. So, if the child on that child's infant, infinite campus portfolio, if it's only the mom that is on their portfolio only, they will be informed. So, Mr. Roundtree, they did work with the parents, sent out notification to the parents of that school that day. If the parents that you are aware of did not get contacted, that means their infinite campus information needs to be updated. So, anytime if something happens at your child, and I'm looking at the camera, sorry. But anytime if something happens at your specific school and you say, I didn't get notification, our administrators immediately respond that day. If you did not get notification, I know we've said this in the past, then you need to check your child's campus portal and make sure your number is correct, that's on there and is current. Because we do inform the parents of that specific school that day.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Trey, add it as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public participation. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Been moved and properly second, all in favor? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved and properly second. I'll call for the question, all in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Roundtree, good evening. In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax distribution for the previous month was $1,972,345. And that is an increase of $127,405 from the previous month. Title adver- Lorum collection for June was $608,409. The business services department is in the process of closing out fiscal year 2023. As part of that process, July and August tax collections are accrued into FY 2023, as well as payroll expenses for 10 and 11-month employees. Final ending fund balance will be available for you to review in October. And the FY '24 financials are there for your review also. And that is item A in the financial report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions about item A? Okay, item B.
Good evening. The superintendent's report, I would like to share some highlights, starting with the area of student achievement and success. Newton County's secondary mathematics teachers participated in a three-day training on July 10th through 12th, 2023 during Summer Academy II. New general education math teachers, special education teachers and math instructional coaches learned more about the new Georgia mathematics standards. The three-day training was held at Eastside High School daily from 8:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. July 13th was a special summer academy for Singleton Math Teachers who instruct enhanced courses, AP courses and college readiness courses. The more teachers know about how to utilize the standards and resources, the more student achievement will be impacted. In the area of high-quality workforce, the 14th Annual Teach For Tomorrow Technology Conference, held on July 20th, 2023, was an incredible success, leaving a lasting impact on all attendees. The focus of Teach For Tomorrow is to increase the capacity of the NCSS staff to deliver and support high-quality instruction. For the first time since the pandemic, the Newton County School System Technology Teams were thrilled to host an in-person event, providing an opportunity for face-to-face interactions that included more than 75 enriching sessions. And I just want to add that we had more than 700 people to attend the Teach For Tomorrow Conference. And this was in addition to the number of new teachers and new staff members that attended as well. In the area of culture, climate and communication, the Day with District Leaders was held July 14th, 2023, during which Dr. Keith Benton provided an overview of the Student and Family Supports Department's staff and functions. Employees were encouraged to contact the department staff regarding youth and teen mental health, first aid training, social and emotional learning supports through Rethink Ed and PBIS training and support. Additionally, the department staff has partnered with the Council of Alcohol and Drugs and will pilot the Peer-Assisted Student Transition, which we call PASS, mentoring program during this school year. The goal of the program is to help rising middle and high school students transition into their new schools by assigning a mentor from the zone respective middle and high schools. The schools participating in the pilot are Alcovee High School, Liberty Middle School and Livingston Elementary School. And lastly, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, on Friday, July 28th, 2023, the Student Services Health Services Team held a district-wide professional learning day for all school nurses and certified nursing assistants. Speakers from Gwinnett, Newton and Rockdale Public Health, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, the Georgia Department of Education and Newton County School System Safety and Risk Management Team provided information. Additionally, the Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Mike Barr, presented information on student and community health and wellness. And just as a side note, there are other items that are listed in the strategic plan that shows where our central office, entire central office has provided trainings and other technical assistance across the district so that we are better prepared to, not better prepared, that we are prepared to support our students with student learning as well as support our families and the employees that we work with. So, that includes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Are there any questions? I do have a question. Anybody have a question? So, I just have a, I have one question and one comment. On the Teach For Tomorrow, you mentioned about the new teachers. So, all of the new teachers attend that as an onboarding process or do they have an option? They all are required to attend as onboarding process? Okay, perfect. That was my question. And then my comment was, I'm excited to see the PASS program on there. So, I'm excited to see that pilot. And just to let the board members know, this actually is a former parent of our school system who works for the Council of Alcohol and Drugs and saw a need in the community. And they were doing it in APS, they were doing it at all other school systems. And I see it at Alcovee, her kids went to Alcovee. So, but, but she reached out to me and she said, Shaquilla, I just want to bring it to this community because I see all of these other big communities get served. So, we appreciate you, Dr. K, for doing that. I appreciate you, Dr. Thomas, for talking with her about the program and seeing a need and Dr. Benton for bringing it here. So, thank you, Dr. K, for that. So, it's always good when we have parents that see a need and come back and support us. So, appreciate that. So, good work. Okay. Item C.
Newton County School Systems Enrollment Report. As of August the 4th, 2023, the total enrollment is 17,408 students, which is a total of 224 students less than we had this time last year. That concludes the enrollment report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about the enrollment report? Okay. No questions? We have no old business. We will move on to new business for tonight. New business, a reminder, the only item that will need action is item Q. Item A.
Item A, the superintendent recommends the approval of membership in the Cognia Network. The total cost is $28,800. As background, the Cognia Network, which is the accrediting agency for the school system, is a community of over 36,000 schools and school systems around the globe. It is the largest educational improvement organization in the world. All members receive exclusive access to the Cognia Continuous Improvement System regardless of where institutions are in their improvement journey. This data-informed framework helps institutions plan and navigate a successful journey that is customized to their specific needs. Purchasing documentation is provided for your review and the funding source is identified. And that is item A, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Any questions for item A? And let me correct my own actions. We do need to take action on D and G as well for tonight. So, when we get to D, I'll need a motion. Item B.
The superintendent recommends the teacher engagement services needed for the school system be purchased from Teach Upbeat LLC. Total contract value is $50,400. As background, Teach Upbeat LLC is an organization designed to support school systems and one of their most important tasks, keeping quality teachers engaged and deployed in the classroom. The Upbeat Survey offers a simple, statistically sound method for understanding teacher engagement and yields consistent, actionable insights regarding what is motivating our employees and ultimately influencing their decision to stay or leave their school. This deals with strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce, and strategic goal area three, culture, climate and communication. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is there for your review. That is item B, Madam Chair.
Any questions for item B? Item C.
The superintendent recommends the purchase of virtual instructional services from Proximity Learning. Total cost is $50,856.66. Proximity Learning provides live-streamed teachers into K-12 classrooms. Proximity Learning teachers are background-checked, certified and experienced. They also hold certifications from the National Virtual Teacher Association, ensuring their instruction will be effective. The instructors are not attempting to take away positions from the district. However, they can form a valuable supplement to school systems where there is a lack of certified teachers in unique or specialized fields. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce. Purchasing documentation is provided, funding source is there for your review, and that is item C.
Any questions for item C? Item D.
And item D, the superintendent recommends the Iowa assessments needed for the school system be purchased from Riverside Insights at a total cost of $40,165. Iowa nationally-normed assessments are used for placement test purposes. This deals with strategic goal one, student achievement and success. Purchasing documentation is provided, funding source is identified, and that is one that is requested board action this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Item D, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second. The floor is now open for questions or concerns.
Just question about, is this, so this for all schools? Are all schools still doing the Iowa? I was under the impression that not all schools were doing the Iowa. Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. This is mainly for, it is not for all schools, it's for placement testing. So, students who transfer in according to Board policy IHE have to have a placement test to determine what, where they will be placed.
So, that's, so that's what the cost is, just for those? It's not?
And for gifted.
And for gifted.
Okay.
Right. And for gifted identification.
All right. So, this is not the school-wide, system-wide Iowa?
From that earlier. You all approved, yeah, fast bridge, exactly.
In July, I think.
But it wasn't able to, that particular test wasn't able to meet our need just yet for placement nor isn't able to meet our need for gifted testing. So, we had to buy a few licenses for that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions for item D? Having none, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero. Item E.
Item E, the superintendent recommends the data analytic software needed for the school system be purchased from Frontline Technologies Group LLC. This is a renewal. Total cost $158,892.1. Frontline Education hosts three products in one platform, Absence and Time Management, Learning and Collaboration Resources and Employee Evaluation Management. Absence and Time Management manages substitutes and employees' absences. Learning and Collaboration Resources is a professional growth product, provides a web-based on-demand solution to support establishing a systematic job-embedded professional learning program. And finally, Employee Evaluation Management provides a platform for online collaboration between peers and within groups, allowing instructional leaders to perform effective classroom walkthroughs and observations. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce. Contract documentation and funding sources are there for your review, and that is item E.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for item E? Item F.
Item F, the superintendent recommends the purchase of educational support resources from iXL Learning. Total cost is $67,014. And this is also a renewal. Individual schools are allowed the flexibility to use their allotted Title I funds in a way that supports and aligns with strategies identified in their Title I school-wide plan. Select schools have chosen to invest in iXL Learning. iXL Learning is a comprehensive education platform that provides personalized learning. It includes a wide range, ranging curriculum, along with diagnostic tools and real-time analytics that can provide individual guidance for students. This deals with strategic goal area one, purchasing documentation is provided, funding sources identified, Madam Chair. That is item F.
Thank you. Any questions for F? Item G.
Item G, the superintendent recommends the calculators needed for middle and high school students be purchased from School Savers at a total cost of $71,074.40. Graphing and scientific calculators are valuable educational aids that can facilitate a deeper understanding of complex mathematical concepts. These calculators enable students to visualize functions, analyze data and solve equations more efficiently, fostering a better grasp of mathematical principles. Deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Purchasing documentation, funding source are there for review. And Madam Chair, board action is requested on this item this evening.
Okay, item G does need action. What is the pleasure of the board? Thank you. I need a second, please. Been moved in second. The floor is now open for questions.
I do have some questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Rayly.
Whoa, the TI-84 Plus. What a great calculator, right?
Please don't ask me how to work it, okay?
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding.
I wouldn't know how to turn it on. But I noticed, all right, so it's 480 of these, and I just, is this for a specific grade? Is like all the high schools or?
All four high schools will get, what, three high schools? Eastside, Newton High School and Alcovee, they will get three classroom sets of calculators, the scientific calculators. Career Academy will get two sets of scientific calculators. They also will get three sets at the three high schools and two for the Career Academy of the graphing calculators. And then all six middle schools, including the theme school, will get a classroom set of the graphing calculators.
Okay, so these are essentially for a kid to borrow while they're in class? Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
We're not giving these calculators to the kids?
Correct.
That is correct.
That is correct.
So, did we buy these last year and the year before?
If they were purchased, they were not purchased with the ESAR funds. So, it may have been a different funding source that purchased calculators or they may not have been purchased. I don't know, Mr. Roundtree did? Were calculators purchased before?
No, we did not purchase calculators. We use the decimals, which is what the state recommends for us to use the decimals, which is, it reflects exactly what is done on the test. So, it's the calculator that's inside their assessment.
Okay. All right. The reason I'm asking, because I have kids, like, we got our supply list when we went to open house, and I've got twins. So, I had to go buy two of these calculators at $115 each. So, I mean, I know, ooh, I had to spend, but I mean, it's $250 I had to spend. And then I get this that says, oh, our kids could actually use, like, I'm just, I'm curious about the communication flow. Did the teachers know that our kids would have access to these? Is it still in our best interest to go buy one? And then lastly, the price, we're ordering them in bulk, and yet the price is higher than I got it at Target. I'm just curious to know, you know, School Savers, do they mark them up? Like, why would we not get a discount for bulk pricing?
Well, we did get a discount for bulk pricing because of these School Savers, the calculators are yellow-specific calculators. They have engraved on them property of the school system. And they also have the cover that goes with it and all of the accessories that go with it. And so...
I get everything but the engraving on mine.
Oh, okay. Well...
We got the case and everything.
Okay.
I'm just curious, like, you guys are experts at your jobs. I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. You guys are experts at your jobs. I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. I'm just saying, I got them cheaper at Target. Certainly, you couldn't go get four hundred and eighty of them at Target, but, you know, is there other agreements other than School Savers that might, we might be able to get a break on them, other than paying higher than retail?
And another thing that we were able to get with School Savers is the pouch where the calculators are held and, and the charging storage case, all of that together, so that when teachers have it as a classroom set, then all the calculators can go back into that pouch and can be easily recharged for use.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so with that, you know, we did look at other vendors to see what vendors had a comparable item and in price and in quality to the type of calculators that we were needing. And this, you know, was the, the best overall price for all of the things that we were wanting with the calculator purchase.
Right.
And so also to keep in mind, we purchased, we're purchasing, if this is approved, scientific calculators as well as graphic calculators.
Right, right. The, the TI eighty-four is some sort of graphing calculator, I know. So, back to the original point then is, were the schools notified of this? Because I got a supply, like, the teacher told us we had to have this, go buy it. They didn't say, hey, we're going to have these in the classroom available for your student. If I'd have known they'd had it available for my student, I probably would have not purchased.
Right, oh, I certainly understand.
Okay, but I, but I'm one of at least four hundred and eighty that didn't know this information. So I'm saying, does everybody come to school with a calculator now, or what are we going to do with these four hundred and eighty? Or are we assuming people aren't going to show up with their supply list?
Well, Mr. Bailey, I do have one question to that, because if there's a classroom set, normally they can't take those home. Those stay at the school, so the students still have homework. So, Dr. Thomas, are they allowed to take these set home? Because normally, when we purchase classroom sets, like we do the iPads, they return it right back to the teacher at the end of the day, and so they do not, they are not allowed to take those sets home.
They're used for, in the classroom, for school, classroom.
So it stays at the school. So you still would need it at home, I'm sorry.
You still would need it at home. And to answer your question.
I just want parents out there thinking, oh, Mr. Bailey, right, no, no, they still need one at home for homework.
It's, it's seventy-one thousand dollar item that I'm asked to vote for tonight that, that as a parent, I had no idea.
But that's at the school.
Well, I understand, but they have, they have devices that we send them home with, so I know they, like, it's not everything. The graphing calculators might stay in the classroom. I get it. I understand what you're saying. I'm not, I mean, I understand. But the point is, they still could have used them at school. They have a, they have their, this device that does all that same stuff when they get home. The graphing calculator is something they can use on the tests and things like that, is best I understand. You can use it on SAT and other things. I understand the benefit of having one. I'm just saying, the information, the communication flow didn't seem to happen in the proper order. I would love for my teacher to have said, hey, you can buy this if you'd like to have one at home, but we have them in the classroom that the school's going to provide. Actually, you, as a board member, are going to sign off on that this week.
Well, and I do understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
But these are ESAR II funds that we have, once we use all, once we have reconciled all of our expenditures with the things that we set to purchase, were set to purchase, then we can go back and see what type of funds or how many funds were still available. So we still had some funds available that we needed to exhaust by September thirtieth. So within probably a week's time, that's when we knew that we had additional funds using the ESAR funds to purchase the calculator. So when the list went out, I did not know that we were going to have additional funds until we paid our bills, until we saw the receipts of some of the things that we had purchased and got the invoice and paid those invoices, other things that were already allocated. So, yeah, again, reconciling monthly reports, reconciling end-of-the-year reports. This allowed us to work with the business office and look at the ESAR II funds in its totality to see how many more funds did we have available and to see what else was on our list of priority, priorities for things to purchase. Now, one thing I did mention, back when I shared the ESAR report in May, that if we were to have additional funds that were available, that we were going to use those funds to purchase calculators. But I do understand what you're saying, the timeliness of it, but we also did not know how many funds we were going to have available until the, the deals, basically, were paid of the things that we had already allocated funds for.
Okay, well, thank you for the clarity, and it also makes sense to why the teachers might not have known.
Right.
Obviously, this is happening, as you're saying, post-reconciliation for ESAR funds and all that stuff. I just, at this point then, I don't want to be wasting the seventy-one thousand dollars if the teachers don't know they're getting them. You know, is this like some kind of gift, or did they request, hey, we need graphing calculators? If you have ESAR money left over, would you be able to get us some graphing calculators?
Well, you know, once we met with the principals throughout the course of the year and in, you know, in any of the principals' meetings or the meetings with, the leadership meeting, EST, I always keep a running list of what type of needs do we have across the district, what priority, we're prioritizing those needs, talking to the other chiefs, talking to the directors, talking to the superintendent to see what do we need to purchase if there are funds that are available. And so this was, again, something that was, you know, stated back in May that we were going to use these funds to purchase calculators in the event that we had additional funds. At that time in May, we didn't, you know, we just didn't know, because all of the money that we had in the ESAR II budget was allocated for the things that we already had them allocated for.
And also, we need to keep in mind that we still have a large contingency of poverty, you know, in the, in the school system. And a lot of the children, you know, for whatever reasons, parents would not have the resources to purchase what, you know, these kinds of things that are needed in class, so it was another way for us to help, again, meet some needs that, that may not have been able to have been met had we not, you know, because they do need them. And, and so this was a way to, to, you know, to do that. Obviously, we couldn't afford to purchase them for everybody to take home with them, but at least when they're in school, you know, they have something to use, and we can train them on that as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I don't mean to be beating the dead horse about the graphing calculators. If anything, if anything, if I could make a recommendation, well, not a recommendation different to what's here, but if we're able to send kids home with a Chromebook, I think we ought to be able to send kids home with a graphing calculator. That's my point, and I, and I'm saying, then that would have saved me and other, other parents, the two hundred and fifty dollars are for them a hundred and thirty dollars or whatever, because they know ahead of time they have that option. If we're one-to-one, why would we not be one-to-one when it comes to the tool they need to actually do their homework? Right, like, that's my point. If this is about best use of tax dollars, let's, let's figure out how to do that. If that's what they have to have for those classes, you know, otherwise, I think there is a bit of, we could just look at how to spend those dollars better, I think, is my point.
And so we certainly, and thank you for that, you know, we'll certainly work with the secondary director and the principals. And all four principals were high school principals. They were a part of the selection of the calculators, the conversation to purchase the calculator, so they were also aware of it. But we definitely will continue to work with them to see how we can provide calculators and the appropriate services for all of our students. Thank you.
I have one quick question. It's for Ms. Neely. Ms. Neely, this supports the new standards in the math.
Yes, it does. It does support the new standards in the math and how to use it. And when I said earlier, the assessment accountability office really recommended for us to use decimals, which again reflects what's in their testing platform. However, it does not take away how you would use it in real life. In real life, you would have some form of calculator if you were working in that field. So we wanted to make sure they know how to use that calculator, along with what it would look like on the assessment. So we're trying to marry both.
Realistic application.
Right, so that's what that part is, but yes, it is, it does reflect that it is used in the standards now.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Bailey, Anderson Bailey has a question.
Yes, Dr. Thomas. My question is, in reference to Mr. Bailey, he purchased the calculators, but at the end of the day, would a kid be able to come back and say, hey, could I sign out one and take home? Because unfortunately, I couldn't afford one. Could they do that maybe?
Well, let me say this. I don't want to answer it on the spot, because it's really a conversation to have with the principals, but we will take that concern back to the principals and let them decide the best way to proceed with students taking out, checking out the calculators. And then we can get a, an answer back to the superintendent that can be shared with the board members.
Because that would help them as well, you know.
Okay. But thank you.
All right, so a motion is on the floor. We've had all discussion and questions. I do need to call for the question for item G. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Thank you. Item H?
The superintendent recommends the contract for mental health clinicians be awarded to Hazel Health. Total contract value, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. As background, Hazel Health will collaborate with the school system in serving children, adolescents, and their families who need support. This support is identified as a school-based behavioral service. Licensed therapists will help students achieve mental wellness through virtual, virtual therapy sessions. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Goal area two, high-quality workforce. Contact, contract documentation is provided. Funding source is identified, and that is item H for consideration, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I do have a question for item H. Dr. Ben? Okay. Dr. Ben, you knew I was going to ask about mental health?
I'm here for you.
Okay, perfect. So my question is, because this is, this looks like teletherapy?
It is.
Okay, so this is complete teletherapy, so it's over the phone or by Zoom or whatever platform they choose to use. Is, this is not replacing our MOU of viewpoint, is it, or is it?
No, so first of all, let me introduce Mr. Gerald Florinoy here, who is with Hazel and has traveled down from Miami to be with us this evening, so. But no, it's not. So we, we have allocated five hundred thousand for the last couple of years for ten clinicians, Apex clinicians. Unfortunately, for the past two years, we've only been able to hire one.
Right.
And so this year, our MOU reads that dividing that in half, that cost in half, and hoping that we can get an additional four Apex clinicians to join the one that we currently have at two hundred fifty thousand, and then reallocating or repurposing the other two hundred fifty so that we can provide telehealth. So the point is, we know that on the school level, we provide tier-one support, and the telehealth piece for us will provide tier-two support, and then we partner with Viewpoint, who can provide the more intensive tier-three supports. So it's in no way removing viewpoint, but it is a way of serving our students, because what we know is, we don't have Apex clinicians in each school. We also know the wait is massive in terms of students who are being referred for mental health services. And so this is an opportunity that we can make sure we serve all those students in need. And so we're looking at somewhere, a turnaround from the time of parent consent of about forty-five days when the services are actually started.
Okay, so my next question, since this is telehealth, this will be still during the school day, like we do the Apex program. And then, so, here's the, here's the thing, since I work for DBHDD. So with telehealth, the person has to be in a good area where they can actually have the service. So we do have places, we have dead spots in our schools. So if a child is on Zoom or on telephone or whatever with the clinician, it is a chance they would not be able to have their session due to that. So have we identified also, logistically, spots in the school building where it will take place where there's not a dead spot?
So we've not, but part of the agreement is, once, if they're approved, then they will actually physically come down and walk each building.
Okay.
The platform that we use integrates with Clever, which is our single sign-on. And so we will identify those spots with Hazel, and then to make sure everything is up and running. They provide the iPads that are used during the telehealth conference. Everything is encrypted, so students won't be able to download or add anything to the iPads. And so, yeah, once, once the agreement is reached, if the agreement is reached, I should say, then they'll come in and do a walk-through of each campus and make sure that those logistical pieces are taken care of.
Okay, and is all individual therapy, is not life-cycle social rehabilitation, anything like that? It's full licensure clinicians that they're using, not like peer-pro clinicians?
Right, correct.
Okay, okay, that's all of my questions.
Yeah, let me just say, I think you mentioned during school. So we, so it's open to, obviously, we're, we're providing it during school. But if there's a need for after-school hours or before-school hours, that's also an option. And, and also on breaks. We know one of the things that we, we've seen is when students go on breaks, fall breaks, spring breaks, sometimes it's not the best time for our students, and so for students who are receiving services, it doesn't have to be interrupted due to breaks.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ben.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have two. Is this for tonight? Are we voting on this tonight? Okay, well, since the gentleman is here from the company, could, could you maybe walk us through what this would look like with a student? And maybe if you could set it up, like, maybe a situation, how the student would even become the, a need to speak to a mental health clinician, and then what that would look like?
Very pleasant good evening to you all, distinguished board members, Madam Chair, Superintendent. My name is Gerald Florinoy. Did not realize that. Another Florinoy would be here. No relation to my knowledge. Was very happy to be here. I am with Hazel Health, and, and so Hazel Health is a turnkey K-12 service. We do provide the iPads. The sessions are taking place over Wi-Fi, secure and protected, so any dead zones should be mitigated. I had a chance to meet the technical person here as well. My background is in technology, so we had a really great discourse around security and provisioning and the like. First, your students would be referred to us by a member of the staff or at the school, what have you. And so receiving that, we then go in and have sure, make sure that all the students have been consented. So we work with families to make sure that they are aware that the child is given, that they've been given consent for their child, and then we would go ahead and have a evaluation for that student. And then following that evaluation, we would set up a student action plan. Our intent is to offer a short interim therapy. We don't replace any of your partners in place today here in the community. We don't replace any of the staff. Our goal is to just get students connected to care more quickly. As mentioned, we do offer before, during, and after school from seven AM to seven PM teletherapy, so families may enjoy this support at home and also during the breaks as well. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Curious about the, the pricing then. I know it's a, it seems to be per student. Looks like we used a round enrollment number and then like a fifteen dollars per student kind of fee. Is there a limited number of hours? You know, how, how would that work?
Yeah, through the chair, there is no limit to the number of hours. We do not say, you know, you can only have this and then we can't see you anymore. As you know, some students require more therapy. Some students have shorter therapy or, you know, less therapy. And so things average out over the, over the course. That is our intent, our experience. And so we also see students here, regardless of whether they have insurance or insurability, what have you. The goal is to provide equitable access to care for all learners here in the district.
Okay, and then just a liability issue, or do you guys carry that kind of, I didn't see that in the documentation. It might be there.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We shoulder that responsibility.
All right.
And I think there was a question as well. All of our therapists are licensed in the state of Georgia. We do not subcontract the workout. These are fully licensed therapists.
Okay.
This is a logistical question, and I know you've said that we can do before, after school, and then during the breaks. So it would be at the school building on that iPad. Would they be able to con, I mean, how would that work on breaks? Would the parent have to bring the child to the school? Or are they able to access something on their own personal device?
It is the latter, absolutely correct. The platform is available on our iPads that we offer there for secure and convenient access in school, but families are able to use any manner of devices that they might have, a cell phone, a tablet, or computer. Family members may also, guardians may also, if appropriate, join our sessions if indeed that ends up being the case, needing to be the case.
Yeah, I just know, as we had discussed earlier, like you said, poverty is an issue, and people may not have, have the transportation to have to come to the school to continue it, so that was my question.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you for your opportunity, Teal. Thank you.
Okay, item I?
Item I, the superintendent recommends the school system purchase twenty buses from Peach State Freightliner. Total cost of the purchase is two million six hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. School system will purchase six fifty-four-passenger buses with lifts and fourteen seventy-two-passenger buses. The table is there for your review that shows the comparative costs. And this deals for strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Purchasing documentation is attached, and the funding source is identified, and that is item I, Madam Chair. is item I, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for item I? Item J?
Item J, the superintendent recommends the school system purchase cameras for school buses, uh, from twenty-four-seven security. The total cost of the purchase is three hundred and sixty thousand, twenty-three dollars, seventy-three cents, and this purchase will be made using a national cooperative managed by TIPS. This deals for strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified, and that is item J, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions about J? Kay?
The superintendent recommends the contract for the renovation of tennis courts at Alcoa and Newton High Schools be awarded to Signature Tennis Courts. The total cost of the project is five hundred, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. A solicitation for a contract for renovations of tennis court at the two schools was opened on August first, twenty-twenty-three. The scope of work consists of milling of existing surface, laser grading, new gravel base, installation of new playing surface, which includes new nets, posts, and striping. Uh, the vendor and their pricing is there for your review. This deals for strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Contract documentation is provided as well as the funding source, and that is item K.
Thank you. Any questions for K? L?
Item L, the superintendent recommends the approval, approval of the use of select areas at Newton High School for Chi-Tau Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. The building will be used beginning September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, through December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And this deals for strategic goal area four and strategic goal area three, and the usage agreement is there for your review, and that is item L.
Thank you. Any questions for L? M?
M, the superintendent recommends the item, the items, uh, there for your review be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. Item M.
Any questions for M? N?
N, the superintendent requests authorization to employ and transfer staff during the first month of school as enrollment and class size equity within the district demands. Um, as background, daily review of the enrollment numbers occur in order to add or collapse classes early in the school year. Based on those reviews, the superintendent has historically been granted the authority to employ or transfer staff as needed in order to effect the change prior to board approval. These additions or transfers will be included in the personnel recommendations for ratification at a subsequent meeting, and that is item N.
Thank you. O?
Item O, the superintendent recommends the adoption of a resolution honoring the fiftieth class reunion of Newton County High School Class of nineteen seventy-three. The resolution is there for your review, and I believe we will read that at the next meeting. That is item O.
Thank you. Any questions for O? P?
Item P, following review and discussion of the upcoming training sessions provided by Griffin Regional Educational Service Agency and GSBA for local board training for twenty twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, the superintendent recommends the approval of the completed proposed local board training plan, and that is attached there for your review, and that is item P.
Okay, thank you. And Q?
Superintendent recommends approval of personnel recommendations as discussed in executive session. Item Q.
I need a motion for item Q, please.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Five zero. Other matters of interest?
Um, of course, we are now into the, uh, today marked, the first complete week of school. We are off to a very good start. We've had a few wrinkles, you know, here and there, but nothing that we have not, um, sought to overcome. The students are excited, teachers are excited, and all the support people, um, are excited, and we're looking forward to a good, good year. Um, our enrollment is on pace, as it was, um, last year, and on most days, we are exceeding where we were at this time of year, last year. Of course, I've been sitting here with enrollment numbers every day, um, and so we just want, um, all of our stakeholders, especially our students, to continue to do their very best, and, uh, we are continuing to hope for a very good school year.
Okay, thank you, Roundtree. Any other matters of interest?
I would just like to give some public kudos to, uh, Superintendent Roundtree for, the first week was, uh, quite a doozy, and so thank you for hanging in there and, uh, the, the time and sacrifice it takes to, to run a school system like this. So, um, your, your metal was challenged, and, and you rose to the occasion. So anyway, just thank you for your hard work, and of course, the whole team, so, appreciate it.
They was them. Thank you.
Okay, so I have, uh, other matters of interest I'll provide, because I did not, um, amend the agenda. Board report should stay on there until we hire a superintendent, so we wanna make sure, and I didn't, I didn't see that it was missing from the agenda, which is fine. So I do wanna do the report, report update and other matters of interest in regards to the superintendent, um, search.